I'm going to call the meeting to order at must be six o'clock, 6:01. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. What is in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent, thank you. We're going to start tonight, so this year we decided, as a board and with my prompting, to do our preliminary budget presentation and hearing at the beginning of our meeting at six o'clock to help incorporate the public, provide the board more time to work on the budget. And we'll be doing the same thing at the Kingswood Arts Center at our January meeting too, because we felt that this might be a more advantageous forum and more welcoming forum for folks and maybe a better time. So I'm going to get up though, I'm going to give the presentation over at the podium. So you give me a second. You know what I can do? Thank you, sorry, my mic was off. I want to welcome everyone. My name is Brody Duchesne, I am the chairman of the finance committee and the Governor-Wentworth Regional School Board, and I want to thank you for coming to tonight's meeting and the our budget presentation and the public hearing. After I get the presentation, folks will be free to get up to the mic and to provide comments, input, ask questions, and I encourage you to come up to the mic so that it's easier for it to come up on the audio later on and everyone will be able to work in the public hearing. The Budget Preparation Process is a conference of effort that begins in October involving collaboration across all levels of the district. Staff members in each school share their budgetary needs with their school principals, who then submit these requests to the SABO office. The superintendent and business administrator meet with each school leader to carefully review. They carefully review.
Did you turn it on?
I did turn it on. Nope.
Yay.
I did, I just didn't press the button one minute. Administrators, so our administrators and our superintendent, they meet with each of the school buildings leaders to carefully review and discuss these submissions. During these discussions, building administrators provide context for any significant increases, explaining special circumstances for or offering rationale where needed. As part of this process, the superintendent and budget and business administrator may ask building administrators to adjust their requests, ensuring that increases are managed while maintaining the district's priorities. Personnel requests are also addressed during this time, with proposals for new positions evaluated based on the strength of the rationale provided. Depending on the justification, some requests may proceed to the finance committee for further consideration. This year's budget discussions include a mix of additions and reductions to positions reflecting the district's evolving needs. Public meetings to review the fiscal year 2026 budget were held on November 12th, 13th, and 14th at Crescent Lake Elementary School, offering valuable opportunities for input and discussion. Following these sessions, additional reductions were made to further refine the budget. Looking ahead, there will be more chances for community to engage in the budget process like tonight or, as I mentioned, at our January 6 meeting at the Kingswood Arts Center. There'll also be a presentation at the deliberative session on February 1st. Both of those again will take place at the Kingswood Arts Center. It's a good place to be to ask questions and a little bit less intimidating for members of the public. Enrollment. The district's enrollment data for the current year highlights a mix of growth and decline across schools, painting a nuanced picture of student population trends. Eppingham saw the most significant growth, with enrollment increasing from 108 to 120 students. This notable rise demonstrates the potential for growth in certain areas of our district. Crescent Lake also experienced an increase, with student numbers rising from 174 to 181, indicating stable or growing interest in the school. Similarly, Tuffton Borough showed a slight but steady increase, moving from 95 to 99 students, reflecting again consistent enrollment that we're kind of seeing in small amounts across the district. On the other hand, several schools faced declines in student numbers. Osspee experienced the largest drop, with enrollment decreasing from 294 to 275, representing a significant shift. New Durham also saw a notable decline falling from 158 to 244, which may reflect demographic changes or other local factors. Kingswood Regional Middle School showed a decline from 362 to 345 students, possibly due to shifts in population speeding into the school. At Kingswood Regional High School and the Lakes Region Tech Center, enrollment dropped slightly from 733 to 729, reflecting stability but with a slight downward trend. Overall, the district's total enrollment declined from 2016 to 2076, a year-over-year loss of 40 students. While certain schools have shown promise in growth, the overall trend points to a gradual decline in district-wide enrollment. The data underscores the importance of understanding local demographic changes and addressing the factors influencing these shifts to ensure long-term stability and growth across all of our schools in the district. This is our general fund budget, beginning of it. On this side, on this slide, the followings and the following slides, so it'll be a couple of slides kind of highlighting our general fund. The decreases reflected in these lines resulted from a thorough review by administrators to identify and implement reductions where feasible. Particularly, attention was given to building maintenance and capital improvement rooms, which were scaled back to offset the cost of repairs and maintenance scheduled for completion during the current school year. The professional services line highlights a contractual agreement supporting students within Lakeside Academy, one of the district's alternative programs, along with mandated special education services. These adjustments demonstrate our ongoing efforts to balance this responsibility with the need to meet both educational and operational priorities and state and federal mandates. You'll see on the next slide, this is our general fund continued. And there are handouts on the chair over there for those of you that didn't drop one yet, but for members of the public, this will probably be on our websites. We move on to our general fund for employees, which includes proposed new staff for the district. You'll see that this amount is up a little bit, that it's contractually obligated in our collective bargaining agreement with our three units that we have in the school This slide highlights our proposed new staff. I can go over each one and provide the rationale that was provided to the finance committee that we've considered. Maintenance technician, which is a district-wide position. Rationale, our maintenance team is currently stretched thin, making this position critical to ensure timely and effective upkeep across the district. Student wellness coordinator, a district-wide position also. This role is essential as we phase out the nurse contract with Huggins Hospital, which is required, Huggins no longer wants to provide us with nursing services, so we'll need someone to manage that new operation in the district. The coordinator will address mental health needs across the district too, aligning with our strategic plan and ensuring continuity of care for all of our students. Special education admin assistant, specifically at Kingswood Regional Middle School. Rationale, the middle school currently relies on a substitute for this part-time role. Expanding to a full-time assistant assures sustainability and stability for special education, DPT, with a very large caseload. As well, I mentioned, we've seen our special education costs increase and so we need staff also to help that increase to. Student support center staff, Kingswood Regional High School. Rationale, a trained staff member will support students transitioning from suspension or hospitalization. This initiative is designed to reduce out-of-school suspensions and provide structured, effective reintegration of students. We prefer to keep our students in schools and in the classrooms rather than providing out-of-school suspensions and the missing class and missing educational opportunities. CTE support staff at the Lakes Region Tech Center. This position addresses safety requirements in the tech school's shops, where additional oversight is critical to maintain and secure a safe learning environment. Grade III teacher reductions, as a reduction force was implemented during the decline in enrollment. As enrollment shifts, the school is reducing a teaching position but requesting a reading focus parent educator provide targeted literacy support. So we'll be asking for a parent educator to help with some of its new reading programs that it's implementing. Increased DPT support, specifically in Tuffton Borough or Eppingham. Both schools are required to have expanded DPT roles to ensure full-time support for special education case management, which as I mentioned is increasing. This aligns with the administrative negotiations too, we had with the Governor-Wentworth Administrative Team to relieve principals from acting as case managers so they can devote their full time to being principals of the individual schools. Grade VI teacher reduction at Crescent Lake, again with student enrollment declining as the grade bubble moves on, there's a little bit of bubble out of Crescent Lake. This reduction, it's going to align with current staffing, so we'll need one less teacher there. DPT at the preschool, specifically special education. This current preschool case manager is overextended across the district and adding another position ensures compliant legally mandated services and better support for students and families. That's what we're asking from our residents and taxpayers, that is new positions. Go to the next slide. Debt service and warrant articles. Over the past several years, we have retired bonds for Osspee, Eppingham, and New Durham. Our principal or debt from the Kingswood Complex project continues to decrease. Each year, the interest increases as the principal decreases because we receive less state building aid with a reduction in the principal. Each year, the board puts forth a building and maintenance warrant article for capital improvements, usually between $150,000 and $200,000. The years when the warrant article has been $150,000, there are typically projects that are not completed and need to be considered the following year. In recent years, we have presented a turf field capital reserve warrant article. The capital reserve was established to avoid the expense of replacing the turf field all at once. The life expectancy of the turf field is 10 to 12 years at a replacement cost of approximately $775,000. Fortunately, we've been able to extend the life of the turf to 15 years through meticulous care. For the continued support of the warrant article, we should have this full replacement cost by June 2025, so that's this upcoming year. We've been saving that money from leftover money in our general fund that the taxpayers and group let us keep. So thank you to the taxpayers, being generous and helping us plan for that infrastructure cost. The last warrant article requests $150,000 for the maintenance capital reserve fund. The capital reserve account was established in March 1990 and is intended specifically for large maintenance projects and retains all funds year-to-year if not used. As district facilities age, this capital reserve account helps the district pay for the unanticipated but inevitable expense of large maintenance and repair projects as Next, our collective bargaining agreements. So I'll cover both of them, one of them, we're just finishing up the negotiations, but the first one, as I mentioned, alluded to earlier, the Governor-Wentworth Administrative Team's contract. This fall, the district engaged in negotiations for two essential collective bargaining agreements, both of which will appear as warrant articles on the upcoming ballot. These agreements with the Governor-Wentworth Administrative Team and the Governor-Wentworth Support Staff Association are critical to ensuring that we retain and support the dedicated individuals who uphold the excellence of our schools and the education we provide to our community. The Governor-Wentworth Administrative Team Agreement, which applies to our administrative team, has been fully approved by both the board and the association. The four-year agreement includes a 4% salary increase each year, reflecting our commitment to the leadership of strategic oversight provided by these professionals. Their work is fundamental to the success of our schools, and this agreement ensures that we can continue to attract and retain talented administrators in the Governor-Wentworth Regional School District. Negotiations with the Governor-Wentworth Support Staff Association are ongoing and have not yet been settled. They're coming to a close very soon though. This group includes food service workers, paraprofessionals, custodians, and bus drivers, who are essential to the daily operations of our schools and the creation of a supportive learning environment for all of our students. The district remains committed to achieving a fair and balanced agreement that acknowledges their invaluable contributions while remaining mindful of district responsibility. Both agreements are vital to maintaining strength and effectiveness of our district's staff. As these warrant articles come before the voters, we'll continue to provide updates, particularly as we work towards a resolution with the Governor-Wentworth Support Staff Agreement. These negotiations are a critical investment in the people who make our schools successful every single year. Next, we have revenue. Understanding our revenue sources is fundamental to planning and sustaining the operations of our school district. The after-schools rely on a device with a diverse mix of funding from state aid, federal contributions, and local revenue, each playing a vital role in meeting the educational needs of our students. State aid provides a significant portion of our cost. At its core is adequacy aid, the primary source of state funding, designed to ensure a baseline level of financial support per student to cover essential educational services. Building aid is another critical state resource, helping districts manage the cost of school construction and renovation projects. The funding is particularly important for upgraded facilities while reducing the tax burden on local communities. Additionally, vocational aid supports career and technical education, CTE programs, which are vital for hunting and on-learning opportunities, such as those offered at the Lakes Region Technology Center. To address the needs of students requiring special support, we have special education aid, which provides funding for high-cost services, ensuring equity and access to resources. Lastly, child nutrition aid supplements our school meal programs, promoting health and wellbeing for students who face food insecurity. Federal funding also plays a key role, with Medicaid being an important source of reimbursements for health-related services provided to students, especially those in special education. This funding helps the district offset costs for mandated services, ensuring compliance with maintaining financial stability. Local revenue complements these state and federal contributions, they're also the overwhelming lion's share of how we fund public schools in New Hampshire. School lunch sales provide a direct support to our child nutrition programs, while tuition from out-of-district residents adds another layer of funding, as families from outside the district enroll their children, and our schools, an example would be Lakefield, they can send up to 10% of our student population to our exorbitant schools. This diversified revenue mix is essential for sustaining programs, maintaining facilities, and meeting the needs of our students. The balance between state, federal, and local contributions allows the district to operate effectively while ensuring financial stability. Monitoring and managing these sources carefully will remain a priority to secure the long-term success of our schools. Important dates to remember. So as I mentioned earlier, Monday, January 6, our school board meeting will have our final budget hearing at the Kingswood Arts Center. I'll probably provide our present for those who couldn't attend tonight. Tuesday, January 14, is the last day for collective bargaining. I'm extremely confident we will meet that deadline. Tuesday, January 14, is also the last date for petition warrant articles, so if the residents want to petition a warrant article, that's your last day to provide them to the district. Tuesday, January 14, is also the last day to post notice of a bond hearing. We don't have any bond issues on our warrant this year, so we haven't had in several years, so that won't be an issue. Monday, January 27, is the last date to post the warrant budget in default budget. January 22 through the 31st are the filing dates for school district officers per RSA 669:19 and 652:20. School district officers is the term in state law for school workers. For example, I'm an out-of-age member, I'll be running for reelection and I'll be filing probably the first day, which is about January 22. So important dates to remember culminating up to deliberative session on February 1st at 10:00 AM in the Kingswood Arts Center. And I also want to thank you all for attending tonight and for listening to this presentation. And I will go back to sit in that chair there. Anyone who has any questions or any comments can take the podium here, and we have a good solid amount of time for the folks to give us feedback. And once I close the public portion of the public hearing, the board can provide its feedback and we can figure out what people would like. Thank you.
I just have a question, which I tried to ask through a 91A request, and I was, had a letter returned to me from our attorney, which shocked me a little because it was just a financial question, and I feel as though we might be wasting some of our school funds on seeking counsel, we don't need counsel, over certain 91As, this one in particular. So my question is just based on looking at 2023 actuals versus the budget, and then now the budget 24 versus the actual, and now what we're budgeting. We all understand, assuming catastrophic aid and what's happening with our catastrophic aid in the state, that our commissioner has underfunded our catastrophic aid, about $30 million. So my question is, on that line where we budgeted in '23, 225, but we received 307, and now we're budgeting again, it looks like 225 was 24, we received 306, and now we're budgeting the 185. Is that because the state has said we won't be receiving that catastrophic aid for the over $70,000?
I'll let the business administrator address that.
Yeah, okay. So that budget 25 is the actual amount, so it's based on last year's expenditures, and with, like you said, the under-budgeting at the state level, that is the dollar amount that we will receive this year. So proposed is for next year, but budget 525 for 185,790 is this year's number that we will receive.
That we will receive from them, but what do we really need for that catastrophic aid? Are we still holding out that at 100?
What we need is always the estimate as to what we're going to expend, because it goes based on, the catastrophic aid is what we've actually expended the previous year, and what constitutes that.
So is the state, I guess my question is, is the state denying us catastrophic aid funds now based on the fact that they are underfunded?
Yes.
They are?
Yes. I think it's funded up 65%.
Yeah, because we were, it was catastrophic aid, it's everything over $70,000, so we're not holding and receiving that anymore?
No, we're not getting 100% of what we're submitting to the state for, we're getting 65%.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Go right ahead and speak.
David, please, this is a new document, and my question is, constabulary is going up 2.5%, so most of the people on social security are getting a 2.5% raise. It looks like this is a 6.6 increase in the budget. And so I'm looking for an explanation as to why we need that much more than what people are making on their social security, on the increase. So I don't know if it's because of the contracts, maybe the DCT contracts were higher, they pushed it up this high, but I'm assuming that you probably have an explanation as to why, because that's something I think we're going to need more forward.
No, of course, and that's something we've already considered, because historically, before I was on the board, and since I've been on the board even during the inflationary periods during COVID, we managed to typically keep, sorry, didn't need me to speak up. Yeah, but we usually have been able to keep, even during inflationary periods, like during COVID, when we saw inflation of 7, 8, even, you know, some quarters 9%, we managed to keep our budget between about 3 and 4% per year. Some of those costs are being adjusted in our contracts, we're having new contracts, and as they renew, businesses are, you know, they're escalating their costs because their cost of doing business has gone up. So a lot of our outside services, we're taking care of our buildings and our infrastructure, we've seen a lot of escalation. We've gone back out for bid, we haven't found better bids, we haven't gotten better bids. Doesn't make me happy, but it's a reality of sometimes these things lag in municipal government, you would know, having served on boards, that, you know, inflation doesn't always set the government first here with its costs and its contracts, it sometimes comes a few years down the road. The other thing is, as Ms. Budminwell alluded to, special education costs. Not only is the state not giving us as much as here as we anticipated, but special education costs in general in our district, they're a large driver and it's a mandated required cost. So we've seen that, that's been a major driver. And you are correct, it's our current collective bargaining agreement with teacher contract with the Governor-Wentworth Educators Association, that is our largest driving factor in this budget. And they negotiate that contract during COVID, during the high inflationary period, so.
Is this the last year of the contract?
Correct.
And what was it, how much did it increase this year?
Do you want to know the dollar amount or the percentage?
I have the dollar amount.
Or percent of all?
I have the dollar amount because I grabbed it off of the ballot. So for this year, for, excuse me, for next year, it was $1,47,371. That was the cost side instead of fine, which is our next year, and it's in this operating budget.
Okay, now, there's another.
I'll also point out the health insurance costs too, that's been a major driver, so.
But variance on the wages on line 100 is 2.8, so what is the rest of it on that?
Well, I mean, I was going to say that, we have part-time staff that we have to pay, and they get a cost of living adjustment. And we have two other teacher contracts, not teacher contracts, but we have the last year right now of our Governor-Wentworth Support Staff Association, which we're renegotiating, the last year of our Governor-Wentworth Administrative Team. So between those part-time and then those other two CBAs, those also, they get cost of living adjustments under current existing contracts. And they also have increased health insurance costs for the full-time employees.
So it comes with that?
That would say.
All the way to line, right?
Yeah, I'd say that would be our biggest driver right now is the wages. We've had to hire some new positions, as I mentioned, because of special education needs. So between the special education costs and the labor costs accompanied with that and increasing needs in the district, you know, the district has, we've been able to keep it very, very prudent over the last few years, and this year because of some out-of-district placements and some of our contractors, they need to increase their costs because their labor costs have gone up, you know, it's reflected in this budget. So I'm not the happiest camper either, but we did, when we were presented with a budget to finance committee, we did go line by line, requested what was the main driver of each line and how much we could decrease each line in this budget. We spent about two hours doing it earlier in November, and we were able to find some reductions in places, but still not enough that, you know, to get that number to where we historically usually are. I don't imagine this will be a number, you know, repeat every year, I can't promise that, but I imagine this will be an outlier to our exception of how we usually, you know, usually be on the cost increase we see in our school district.
You've spoken to special education, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the numbers, and you don't break it down here, I would think, do you, on the sheet? That's included in wages?
Correct.
Right, so do you have that, how about the total amount for special education this year?
I don't have it broken out for this meeting. For next meeting, I would have it broken out.
Oh, okay.
If you want to email me, we can also provide it to you in advance before the next meeting too.
Okay, I'm curious what the differential is.
Yeah, you want to see.
What you're factoring.
Yeah.
Okay. And you said something about $150,000 for maintenance, and then you, I thought you said it was going to be more this year, but then it sounded like you decided to go back to $150,000.
The last few years, we've, so in our building, so we have a building maintenance warrant article that goes to our trust fund, and that doesn't raise taxation, we don't ask for additional money, it's any money that's left over in our budget, rather than lapsing back to the taxpayers, goes into a trust. But I think what you're talking about is a building and maintenance warrant article, we do ask for additional funds. Historically, we've tried to keep that more recently because of infrastructure needs, at about $200,000 to $250,000. We've scaled it back this year to $150,000. So this year, we have scaled it back to $150,000.
Because we have, because I don't know how you do it on $150,000.
We do have, some of our costs are included in our, you know, professional services line, but that's part of the issue in New Hampshire that we have, where we have very limited revenue sources, and as you pointed out, we're at 6.6%, and we're just going to have to postpone some projects. Again, I don't love the 6.6 number, I don't like having to postpone projects, but, you know, if we came to you tonight with a number that said 10% and had everything on our wish list paid for, we wouldn't be able to pass a budget, then we'd be in a default, we'd be in a worse situation. So we're trying to get a budget passed that meets all of our mandated requirements and meets the basic infrastructure needs while being cognizant of what we think we can pass on our community.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, I appreciate it. Are there any other additional questions or comments? Go right ahead, I don't see anyone else, open forum.
I'm sorry, probably don't have that answer in front of you for this, but just because David alluded to it and Brody, you mentioned it, what are our costs for out-of-district placement, and how many students do we have out of district?
We don't have those numbers handed to you.
Okay.
I can, yeah, you can email us.
Okay. I just don't want it to go to the lawyer.
If it's just a question.
Okay.
When we get the special education stuff, we do get worried sometimes about, you know, protecting student private.
And your final number was $9 million on special education, the last posted. And your final number was 9 million on special education, the last posted number, if you're.
Go in once, then twice. All right, I'll close the public portion of the public hearing. And I will turn it back over to the board. Does anyone have any comments, questions? Yes, Jim Pittman?
There's a question, if the other collective bargaining agreements, the, the amount showing in year one, is that correct? Or is, is there a type of?
Under.
Is it 171 or is it supposed to be 71?
No, that's, that's correct, that's the first year of the grant benefit.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's because we no longer have the positions in Effingham and Tufton Borough. Those, yeah, well, those principals now are 100%. So they're no longer doing DPTs, that, that is a simple cost there in the first year. Yes?
I was wondering if the budget includes funds for the lead remediation here at New Durham School and whether the S.A.U. has, has taken a look at the lead numbers from the carpenter's lead kitchen and whether those, those remediation efforts are going to be included in our budget or if they will be slot through grant money as we did for Oski Center School.
Grant, grant, get the lead out, grant.
Yeah, grant. To kind of clarify though, the grants reimburse, so we're still, we don't need a grant to do remediation. We do remediation and then the grant reimburses us.
So how much is, so that's included in the budget clearly?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, well, that'll be a revenue we get. And, and we know we have to do the remediation, we have to do the testing, the second wind to, you know, test all of our different, where, you know, our water and what's in it, so.
Okay, so that's in the budget with anticipation that it will be returned through grants?
That is my understanding.
Correct, correct.
Okay, do you know offhand how much is budgeted for that?
No, we're, but we're still gathering quotes for this year for the remediation in the very school, so it's an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you. I didn't use the mic, did, did my boogie voice come through okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll point out too, I mean, this, this budget still isn't done, we still have a final hearing. And as Kathy mentioned, there, you know, we still have the WISA agreement to finalize to see the cost for that. So there are some things that are in this that may change. I don't imagine drastically in a way where, you know, we're gonna see crazy increase in costs or we're gonna find a bunch of cost savings that we somehow all missed over the last few months. So, but there, you know, there will be things, so.
So just to clarify, if I want to get those numbers, I would email you and copy Kathy?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
I just want to add, those numbers are not known specifically, we're gathering information. So sure, we can have an estimate, which some lines are estimated for repairs and maintenance or, or the water, the water line, which is the usage of water or possibly the lead remediation. But of course, we don't know what the numbers are going to be until we get estimates as to which, there's different paths to take to remediate lead, it depends on what outlet it is. Outlet meaning where the water is coming from. So depending on trying the least expensive way to remediate an item or an outlet and then going back to a more expensive way, so, you know, that's, that's the process that we're going to run through right now.
So I, I think if I'm understanding correctly, there's really no point in me sending an email anytime soon.
Correct.
And waiting till after January or?
Correct, we're having a building and maintenance committee meeting on December 12, if I'm correct, and, and at 2 o'clock at the S.A.U. office, so there'll be more work and more information shared on that.
Also, they'll be reviewing the process for how we do lead remediation. I believe Dr. Beck or less than that will be attending, so if you have any.
So December 12 at 2 at the S.A.U.?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Board members, anybody else have comments, questions on the budget, suggestions? Do you want us to refer it back to committee? Do you want us to be fine with it as it is right now?
Well, just in our next scheduled finance committee meeting, do you have one?
There are none unless the board were to request one. And all of our numbers pretty ahead of time and we're able to review everything. We have historically, sometimes if there's been additional request for positions later on in the process or if something comes up, we've met, but this year, you know, what we currently got on the table is what we got on the table.
If I could just clarify, so there are some outstanding estimates and so on. What is the formal process for adjusting those numbers in our budget? Kathy, do I assume that you just fill in the blanks basically when you have numbers that may change?
Usually by now that it can solidify, as you can see, there's no line or no information on WISA that agreement because it hasn't been finalized in a draft form for goal sets to find out on. Once that happens, I will be able to cost out those items. And obviously, for next meeting, we'll have that information, that number. And I'm sure that we more of an overview given regarding what that, that looks like. But obviously, if there's a missing number, if going through the budget, you find something, if someone questions me about, what about this, what about that? Of course, I encourage that because it is a large budget, there are many multitude of lines. I can't say that I'm waiting too much for anything substantive to come in, but obviously, if there's something missed or if there is a correction to be made, then it'll be made and I'll bring it to everyone's attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Tom. Would you, would you mind using the mic, we should try to use the mic so that. Yes.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Can anybody?
Huh?
My, my face is lit. Yeah, we can.
May I have a moment for someone who clicks?
Can you hear me now? Yeah. Is it just me or is it the mic?
Uh?
No, I think you just have to talk a little louder, closer to the mic.
Okay. My question is, now I simply missed it in the presentation. Perhaps we have, did we have on the new positions under premium this year?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. That's okay. Better to ask and make sure you have it, then just not ask. Yeah, it's on page three of the slides.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Tom. Well, seeing and hearing no other comment, I'm not over assuming. I just want to thank the finance committee for really working through this for the last, you know, the three nights in November, the 12th, the 13th, and the 14th. Because, you know, it's, it's a little bit higher than we had anticipated in, in most years, but we found what we could and we saved as much as we could for the taxpayers' well-balanced needs of the district. So I appreciate everyone's fortitude in that process and the rest of the board, you know, for being supportive based on your feedback tonight. And, you know, hopefully we have more discussion at our next meeting. If people have questions in the meantime, definitely email myself, Kathy O., or Caroline, and we'll try to get them answered and, you know, we can have some more discussion energy over the evening. But with that, I think I'll move on to the next part of our agenda, the regular public portion, business meeting. Is that okay with everyone? All right, make sure we have, everyone has an opportunity. So we will go to agenda review. I, do you have anything to add to the agenda? I have nothing to add to the agenda. Anybody else? Hearing none? Won't change the agenda at all. And next is the New Durham School student presentation. I don't think they're gonna be here till 7, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. So there are some smaller things that we can do until 7 o'clock, like the acceptance of minutes. So if the board's okay with it, I'll move ahead to the acceptance of minutes section. We can go back to the New Durham School student presentation at 7 o'clock once the families get here. Excellent. All right, let me make sure I get my notes right away for who's at the meeting. So first, we'll do the November 4th accident affairs committee meeting minutes. And in attendance at that meeting were Dr. Beck, Mary, Charlene, and Tom Bickford. So if someone who is at that meeting would make a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Moved by Dr. Beck. Seconded by Mary. And you're ready, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Beck?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Excellent. Move on to the November 7th school board meeting minutes. And I actually have one edit.
Do I have two edits?
My edit is under the building and maintenance report. And of course, at the end, the last sentence, you're missing a D., an E. from my last name, the second E.
That's your name then.
Yeah. Other than that, I have no other edits. So if no one else has any other edits, does anybody else have edits?
I still have two.
Oh, go right ahead. Sorry, I couldn't hear you though.
Should I use the mic? Okay, is that on?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'd like to draw your attention to page four of five. And if you look at page four, under line four, "Popwell at locker rooms", after the words "Miss Seibel", I would like to delete, quote, "commented on", unquote, and replace with the following, quote, "stated that someone on a Wolfboro Community television broadcast mentioned the presence of a mini fridge with a beer in the locker room", unquote. And then on the same page, line seven, after the word "uniforms", I would like to insert, quote, "in the locker rooms", unquote. And that's all I have, and I would use you, the, the verge.
Thank you. Is there any objections? Hearing none? If someone would make a motion to accept the November 7th meeting minutes?
Make a motion to accept the November 7th meeting as amended.
As amended, thank you.
Okay.
Seconded by Dr. Jim, so motion by Guy, seconded by Dr. Jim. You would call the roll once you're ready.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beck?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Aye. Next, we have the November 12th. I'm gonna do this as a bulk of the November 12th, November 13th, and November 14th finance committee meeting minutes. In attendance at the 12th was myself, Guy Pike, Jim Pittman, and Dr. Scheckler. At the 13th was also myself, Guy Pike, Jim Pittman, and Dr. Beck. And on November 14th was myself, Guy Pike, Jim Pittman, and Dr. Beck. I have no edits to those meeting minutes, do any of you? Hearing none, would someone make a motion to accept those three sets of meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
So moved. By Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Beck. You can call the roll when you're ready, Kathy, that we appreciate.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Dr. Beck?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. And next, we have the manifest approval. Let me find this out, dollar amount, it's somewhere in all the ones, it's not looking to go. The manifest tonight is in the dollar amount of $2,130,029.29. Someone make a motion to accept the manifest as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Guy Pike, is there a second? Seconded by Dana Streeter. Is there any comments, questions? Hearing none? Kathy, call the roll when you're ready.
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beck?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. Going to your report if you'd like. You could do public input. I just want to do public input or do a little of the superintendent's report before the student presentation?
Well, we'll do public input after that?
Well, we'll have public input at the end. They always have two periods. I don't have a preference either.
There are options, yeah, for public input.
Okay.
Then we'll enter into public input right now. So if there's anybody who'd like to provide public input, please do so. It's 15 minutes, three minutes for each individual unless extended by vote of board. Ask everyone to be respectful and to not cross chatter in the, in the crowd and to direct their comments to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, staff, parents, students, and community members. My name is Bella Diamond, I live in Wolfboro and I'm a junior at Kingswood Regional High School. And I'm here to talk to you all about food insecurity in our district. I recently had the pleasure of talking with Mary Shiller about the struggles the students of our community face, namely the lack of sufficient access to food. I understand she will later be proposing a warrant article, and I want to preface her presentation with the perspective of students as we are most directly impacted by whatever decision we take. Patrick Tutweiler, the Massachusetts Secretary of Education, said about free lunch in his state, "Food security is essential for the health and well-being of our students. Aligned with our goals to stabilize, heal, and transform our education system, this funding ensures that students can focus on their classes at school instead of where their next meal is coming from. This parallels our district's own strategic plan, one major pillar of which is student wellness. A concerning number of students in our district do not have access to nutritional units. This is reflective of Carroll County. According to a survey conducted by UNH's School of Public Policy in October of 2023, 7.8% of the residents of our county struggle with food insecurity. This is the highest rate in the state whose average is 6.8%. The same UNH survey stated that despite the, despite the fact that more residents of Carroll County are low income than those in other areas in the state, it is less common for them to participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, and community-based resources like food services. And one of the reasons for this is cited, is cited as people saying they don't need assistance. While 7.8% of our residents qualify for the SNAP program, only 4.8% utilize the service. This means that students' only access to adequate nutrition could be at our schools. The following are just a few testimonies from high school students and staff, which I will read anonymously. A 12th grade student said, "Some kids don't qualify for free lunch, but still struggle to afford to pay. I think a free lunch program can be a very good thing." An 11th grade student said, "For a large amount of last year, it was decided that I did not qualify for free or reduced lunch. This was difficult for our family, given that my mom is a single parent, makes less than $19,000 a year. On top of that, she works four close jobs at a time just to afford our bills. Once we qualified, I found that free lunch greatly helped our family because without it, I may not be able to eat lunch every day. Though we always figured out this accommodation has lifted some weight off my family's shoulders. A 10th grade student said, "I think this would be beneficial for those who are financially struggling and unable to find meals as well as not being able to afford free lunch." And finally, a faculty member said, "I bar-lunch for needy students on a daily basis as I work in the lunchroom at KRHS. The students are hungry, not everyone has money." Those were just four of the 235 of our students and staff who signed petition in favor of free breakfasts and lunch to the students' wellness here. When floating on the upcoming warrant article, I ask thee to consider myself and my peers. Consider the countless times I've heard, "I'm hungry, but my account isn't negative." Consider the times that we as students have had to cover each other due to lack of funds. Consider the times that we as students have had to cover each other due to lack of funds. And consider the selfless teachers who have fed the children with their own money. Thank you for your time."
We're in the, for those of you that are entering, we're in the public input period right now of our meetings. So if you'd like to provide public input, I'm going to read to you. If not, then we can, or we're all set to do the student presentation?
We're all set.
We're all set. Okay, then I will close the public input period. And we will go back to the New Durham School Student Presentation. And we will receive the student presentation today. Who's leading this? Excellent.
So when we have Advent team meetings, the superintendent always asks us to start off with celebrations. So I thought I might just start off with a few celebrations here at New Durham School. We love our new playground. It's especially fun in the morning when it's rusty, because you go down the slides and you go flying off. We had 44 adult guests who were, who are community helpers in New Durham who came for Thanksgiving dinner. We have a large box of thank you cards to veterans that we are sending off to honor flight. We had 48 parents and children at our most recent Whine &amp; Cheese, that's W-H-I-N-E. And we learned about self-regulation and the power of nature. We have 56 students and 19 parent chaperones signed up to go to under sports at Dunstoss, which is a new switch for us, 22 that will be ice skating at the Rochester Ice Arena in January. One of the things that I'm most happy about is the Let Grow Project, which you have heard about in the past. If you have time tonight, there are two sample trees over there in the doorway. And they represent some projects that students are doing to become more independent. Some of them are especially fun. We had a second grader who attempted to wash his floor of his kitchen. And his mother said, "Eventually it did dry." But some students are making muffins, they're making dinner, they're very, very cool. So the big tree is the one we have in the lobby. And then many of the classrooms have the classroom tree that is on the bulletin board. That happens to be Mrs. Beaverstock's classroom tree from the fifth grade. So please take in some of the leaves. It's very cool. I always have to celebrate the staff of New Durham School. The educators in this building are collaborative. They are working together to try to provide differentiated intervention to as many students as humanly possible. We were early adopters of the science of reading, and you're going to hear about that tonight. We are progress monitoring students. We have students as young as second grade who are setting goals for their reading rate and graphing their reading rate on a monthly basis. So we have some very exciting things happening here at school. And Charlene, I do want to thank you for your question about lead at New Durham School. We have recently met with the Department of Environmental Services, Maintenance, and I met with them, and we are in the process of getting those quotes that we need to try to move forward. So thank you.
Good evening. You may have noticed some young learners wander in. Tonight, they will be showcasing for you the competency. Know and apply grade level phonics and word analysis skills to decode words. At the K-3 level, this is what we're looking at: letters, blends, digraphs, vowel teams, not only in terms of spelling, but also in sounds. And at a grades 4 through 6 level, this is looking at prefixes, suffixes, root words, base words. Our curriculum and instructional practices align to the science of reading. This is a presentation in and of itself, but essentially know that the science of reading is a large, diverse body of research from various fields that explains how reading develops in the brain, specific skills that contribute to proficient reading, and how to best teach reading. Tonight, our reading specialist Jackie Benson and fifth grade teacher Karen Beaverstock are going to lead some of our primary and intermediate students in a comprehensive and morphology three-part drill. This activity is seen in grades K through 6, but the content and specific skills practiced in the three-part drill change based on grade level. The continuity of the activity across grades allows students to focus on the content rather than the process. We have already seen improvements in literacy proficiency among our youngest learners, so we are eager to continue and refine and roll out our updated literacy curriculum and see more progress. Stay tuned on that. I invite you, the members of the board, to sit with the students to participate in either the comprehensive over on your left or the morphology activity behind me. Feel free to sit in one of the chairs, stand behind, or bring your chair over if needed. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Go join the students.
So this is what we do in kindergarten and first, second, and third. And so you're going to see something called the three-part drill. But before we start our three-part drill, we have to do a warm-up. So Katie spoke a little bit about the science of reading, reading that body of research, and there's five big ideas when it comes to the science of reading. This is how we know if the brain's learning that. The first of those areas is something called phonological awareness. And that is the ability to manipulate sounds just out loud, which is a number saying a word or made of words. So one way we draw students' attention to it is a little phonological awareness. So I've got my three friends here, they're experts in this. And I would love for you guys to join in, but I'll give you directions for each step, I promise. So the first part is I am going to say a word, and then I'm going to ask you to get the sound of that word. So for example, if I said "cat," you would say "k-act." We do a little, yeah, it's really fun. Karate chop, so you are welcome to karate chop. It adds a little bit of movement to this. So the first word we're going to do is "him." Him, perfect. The next word's going to be "take." Take. Take. We're a little bit tricky in this, right? So as adults, we think about the layers of stuff. That's how we think of words, but this is just doing the sounds. The next thing we're going to do is I'm going to say the ending part of a word, and we're going to add on a first sound. So we're going to make a mystery word. So the ending sound is aim, we're going to add "m." Name. Good job. Ready? Om, add. Good job. Now we're going to do the opposite. So we're going to say a word and just take away the first sound. So now we're really having to isolate the parts of these words. So the first word is "out" without "p."
Out.
Good. "Cuff" without "c." It's a little bit hard. The last job we have is to change the sound. So here, we're going to be changing the first sound in a word. So the first word is "fan." We're going to change "s" to "k." Again, good job. "Hi," change "h" to "r." Hi, good job. So that's just a little snippet of our warm-up. We do it for about five to 10 minutes. They get quick. And these get really advanced, where you replace ending sounds, you replace middle sounds, you replace vowel sounds, so it just can really build continuously in the curriculum. It's great work. The next thing we're going to do is our three-part drill. So we talked about those five big ideas for the science of reading. The first is phonological awareness. That's what we practice here, and we do it every day. The second is phonics. So this is that we understand that words are made of a sound, we're meant to spell and read the sounds. So one way we practice that is with something called a blending board and a sound deck. Minimal tools, high reward. So what we're going to do first is all the concepts that students have learned go into their sound deck. And we practice this three times a week. So we'll just review all the sounds they sound. What you'll do is you'll see either a letter or a combination of letters. We state the letter and the sound. So for example, we would say here, "D-R says 'r.'" "G-R says 'r.'" Good, you're welcome to join me. "Q-U says 'w.'" Good. "L says 'o.'" "P-R says 'r.'" For vowels, there's actually two steps to it. So here, we have "A says 'af.'" "A says 'ay." So when it opens up with a long vowel, so that's reinforcing a short sound and a long sound.
Attention.
The tricky part is, a lot of us are really proficient readers, but we struggle to spell it. I know, I certainly fell into that category. And so, yeah, it's tricky, right, to learn how to spell words. So here, we're first going to practice reading, and then you're going to see if we practice encoding, spelling. So now just hearing sounds and then remembering the letters that represent those sounds. So first, we'll go for our sound deck, we'll do a couple more. Then we'll do our blending board. That's the best part. All right, here we go. "A says..." "W-H says 'w.'" "P-R says 'r.'" Last one. "T-R says 'r.'" A lot of "r" ones in here. So now what we do is we take all those sounds that we would review, and we put them on our blending board. Now, the blending board gives you the ultimate amount of possibilities for the amount of words you're going to make. A majority of the time, the words that you make on the blending board are going to be something called nonsense words, so they're not real words, but we can still read them like they are. That's actual decoding. That's applying what we know about letters and sounds and reading the words. So even though we get a lot of nonsense words, it's still great practice to reinforce those letters and sounds. So when we think about words as syllables or parts, a lot of those are nonsense words, right? Correct, we're right. Well, thank you for saying that. So what we'll do is, I'll kind of hover over each of the sounds. We'll say the sounds, and then we blend them all together. So it'll look like this. "Dur-act." "Drat." Now, we get really excited, actually, when we make a real word. So if we do end up making a real word, we give a double thumbs up, because we're like, oh my gosh, we made a real word. Here we go. "Dur-act." "Drat." "R-act." "Rat."
"Quat-act."
"Quat."
Ooh. "Qua-az." "Quas." So everything you see here is something that is previously taught, like double letters at the end of a word. So that's why it would be included in the sound deck. It wouldn't be in like the beginning or the center. Well, maybe it's not. "O-az." "Quas." "Tur-az." "Tras."
"Tur-ef." "Tras."
Change our vowel. Ooh. "Tur-ef." "Trel."
Yeah, that is, that's a name.
We have a man named Trel.
Trel. Thanks for following the rules. No, no, thanks God. See, it's exciting.
Very much.
This will be our last one. "Tur-ef." "Rat." Good job. All right, next up, the final part of our three-part drill. So we start with saying the sound, then we read the sound. Now we're going to do, we can apply the sounds. Remember them, and actually the letters that represent them. That's where we do this. So this is called extensive practice. So what it means is we know that learning through play is great for kids. And we also know that hands-on tactile learning is great for kids. So here, this gives them instant feedback to letter formation, and it also gives them a fun way to practice, let's be honest. So with our magic sand? I know. And you know what? Remarkably, we're all very responsible. There's very little spills. The one major spill in my office was my fault, so. I knocked it all over. The kids are so careful. So when we make our letters in our sand trays, you're all doing pretty jump following the rules. The only rule is the sand tray always has to touch the table. That's our rule, right? Oh, I'm so sorry. I can make an exception. The fun part about the sand is if you make a letter, so feel free to make a letter, you'll make it. And then a way that we kind of reset our boards is you can just give it a quick shake and it disappears. Exactly. And you're ready for our next letter. It is, if, for sometimes, students do have like sensory preferences, right? They don't love the sand, and in those cases, I also like to use like the back of the pencil. You're absolutely right. More often than not, we use lowercase letters. So you're right, when we do them in our sand tray, we practice our good lowercase letters. Thank you. And they're always letters. So this is the encoding piece. This is hearing a sound and being able to remember and identify the letters that make that sound. Now, in the English language, there are 26 letters. There are actually 44 sounds that those 26 letters can make, because letters can make more than one sound. There's actually 200 and even a few different spelling combinations for that. And when you teach them systematically, it kind of unlocks the key of reading for our kids. So there's going to be some letters where I'm going to tell you there's more than one way to make that sound. And so then we'll divide our sand tray into that many parts. So actually, this is one of the first ones we have. So there are two ways we ought to make this sound. So the kids already know what to do, right? They're going to split their board in half, so they've got two working areas. The sound is "k." Good job. It is another call and response. You're welcome to tell me. "C says 'and.'" "A says..." You guys nailed it. You're right. We just haven't learned yet. There's "K," there's "C," there's "K." "U-U-U," and actually "T-A." Like chaos. Yeah. All right. We know one way to make this sound. The sound is "p." "C says..." Excellent. Let me know when, are we on time? Right, a couple more. It's a blast. It is. The sound is... "Y." "C says..." Yeah, good job. The sound is "sh." "A says 'sh.'" Good job. The sound is "tur." "T-R says 'tur.'" Thank you all. And thank you to my three friends who came in help. They were a great example for us. Thank you. Yeah, we also do like carpet, like carpet squares, we do like carpet samples.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Cam, thank you, Billy.
Let everyone settle in and we can carry on with the public portion of our meeting. For those of you that weren't here, we had our public hearing that opened at six. We accepted our meeting minutes and everything. We skipped the student presentation, because the students weren't gonna present until seven. So we had public input. There'll be another period at the end of the meeting for public input. And so we just did our student presentation. And now we are on to the student representatives' report. Jack is our student representative from Kingsville Regional High School. He'll take it away, Jack. Your turn, yours.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Today I'm presenting on a computer, because my printer at home decided to not work just a little bit ago, so bear with me here. Anyway, a glad report to you guys tonight. I have a lot to say. I'm gonna start off by talking about student council. This past month, student council put together 30 Thanksgiving baskets for families in need this holiday season. We're receiving donations from students and generous community members. To help the health of these students and community members who wouldn't have to use nearly as many baskets. This month, student council will be working on a Wish Upon Star program, which helps get gifts to kids in need this holiday season. Into the world of sports, winter sports trials started today. And teams start their seasons very soon after. Varsity boys and girls basketball opened their season against Lebanon. And the boys would be at home while the girls would be traveling to Lebanon. The indoor track team will have their first meet on December 14th at UNH. The boys hockey team will open their season against Kearsarche Plymouth on the 16th at home. Then the Kingswood Prospect Mountain Night Wolves will start their season on the road at Pinkton on the 18th. Then the Kingswood boys and girls ski teams will have their first meet of the season, also on the 18th at King Pine. The Kingswood theater program put on their performance of Mary Poppins, the Broadway musical, this past month. I did attend and I enjoyed it very much, I hope you guys did as well. Registration for their next performance, She Kills Monsters, is now open. Students should have received an email with a Google form attached, so they can register for the cast or the group. This past month, the Kingswood math team earned a second place finish at their competition at Newfound High School. They currently sit at first place in their meet. Their next meet is December 11th at Laconia High School. The Kingswood robotics team competed last month at the Battle of the Bay and Girls Behind the Glass, which were both hosted at Prospect Mountain High School. They took home first place in both competitions. Just this weekend, the Christmas Craft Fair took place at Kingswood and many clubs were active. Both FBLA and the National Honor Society helped operate the craft fair by assisting vendors move into and around the building. They ran the raffle table and the cookie walk, and they also helped make lunch for vendors. It was a great help and couldn't have done it without them. Both DECA, Skills USA, and FFA all helps sell products that they made through their programs at their own vendors. And they did a great job. Me personally, I bought a Reen from FFA and it looks amazing, it's hanging right in front of my garage and I love it. So, once again, thank you on behalf of the student board for letting a voice inside the school be on the school board. We greatly appreciate this opportunity and thank you.
Thank you, Jack. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. First is, well, I'll let you go ahead. You don't want to share, Mike?
First, I want to thank the students' fantastic presentation and the teachers. Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation and including us. And it's always a challenge to follow the student representative report, but I will do my best. In my report this month, just a few things that I'll highlight. First, we have an update to our website, actually all of our websites. So the district website as well as our school websites. We have a new tab, it's a floating green tab labeled tip line. So this tool is designed to enhance communication and allow anyone, parents, students, staff member, community member, to provide valuable information or just to provide feedback or ask a question. So feedback and question, those go directly to the school. And you leave your contact information and we follow up with you. Or you can make a report. This is a way to add a layer of safety and security. You can leave a report of something that is concerning, that you'd like to report to the district. And that can be anonymous. You can share your contact information or you can keep it anonymous. There's even a way to upload an image. So if you see something concerning on social media, you can upload that image. This does not take the place of 911, but it is a way for us to receive information that otherwise we might not have received. So we encourage people to take a look at that and use that as needed. The other update I'd like to share is regards to our strategic plan. The culture of belonging, a focus area is number three focus area. And all of our administrators met with Great Schools Partnership. I believe that was a couple weeks ago. And the focus was on equity, inclusivity, so that we can move forward with an equity audit. We're looking at data and we're looking at ways that we can support our equity team in moving forward with additional, additional plans to improve and provide professional development for our staff around equity. So that was a very productive, very productive session. And that is the end of the first item, superintendent report, the superintendent district update.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. So the next item is American Education Week appreciation. So we sent a letter and a small token of appreciation to all of our educators. American Education Week was November 18th through the 22nd. And I'll share some of the letter that we sent. This week, as we honor those who serve in public education, please know how deeply we appreciate your unwavering dedication. The long hours, the challenges, and the countless acts of kindness you show to our students and families, do not go unnoticed. You make a difference every day and we are incredibly grateful for your commitment to our shared vision of building a brighter, stronger future for every child. Thank you for being the heart of our school, for your passion and resilience, and for all the ways you contribute to making our learning community a place of hope and possibility. So I want to extend my appreciation and thanks to all of our educators.
I should have, I should have, does anyone have a question for the superintendent on her first report? Okay, hearing, I just wanted to make sure. I know sometimes we'll have questions.
Absolutely, anytime. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we can move on to the charitable donation.
Excellent, thank you. So we have a donation request from the Governor Wentworth Arts Council. So the Governor Wentworth Arts Council was formed in 1968 to promote and stimulate arts in Southern Carroll County. They have been a driving force in so many ways for scholarships and field trips and funding. Unfortunately, at the end of this year, the Arts Council will be disbanding for a myriad of reasons. So in doing so, they would like to donate their assets to the school district. They estimate at the end of the year, they will have approximately $9,300 in cash and roughly $2,800 in physical art supplies, a value of $2,800. So we ask the school board to consider this donation.
I have a, I have a question. Could we put the cash donation into a trust? Are we allowed to do that? Do you want to establish a trust and put the cash donation in there? Sorry. Might be a way to honor the intent of what the donors originally gave to the nonprofit by putting the money into a trust and let it earn interest. And maybe over time, we wanted to put more money into it to support the arts in our school district. Just an idea, I hadn't even floated it by the superintendent, an idea where I saw we're getting cash and people wanted to go towards the arts rather than it kind of, you know, go into our budget and be lost out for a year to maybe continue the legacy of the organization. Just my personal thought.
I think I have a question too. How, how do we earmark it so it goes to the arts and doesn't go into the general public?
We can certainly do that. When I have been in conversation with the president regarding this, I stated that you really needed to show the intent, what your intent by this donation is for, so that we have clear understanding that it's only for that. So this could actually be put into, I don't know that I would go through a trust, because that requires a lot more work. And it also requires a lot more work on their end to decide how and when it's used and like you said, principal or interest. Is there an approval process, that sort of thing, to withdraw the funds? Because when you put it into trust, that's what happens. The one thing we can do is, it can go into a student activity account. It can be a donation to the district in a student activity account, which never lapses and it's for the students. And it would be earmarked for exactly what they're stating. So that's where the security and safety would be. And that's allowable per our auditors.
I'd like that personally. I think, I, you know, then we can track, you know, the student activities that are spent on that. We know it'll be for arts in our school district and honoring the Governor Wentworth Arts Council that's been promoting the arts in our community for many years now. It's 1968. Yes, Jim Pittman. Do you need a mic?
Me.
Passing that.
I'm fully in favor of accepting the money and with the conditions accepted, only question is, who would be the authority to disburse those funds? I don't think it should be a board function, it seems like that would be burdensome for us for, you know, relatively modest amount of money. Would that be up to the superintendent?
You could take action to, as Kathy O'Villan has stated, you could take action to accept the donation and have it earmarked in a student activities account for the arts. And then from there, we could determine.
We have an advisor. And obviously with the intent from the council as to what business we're in for, the advisor of that student activity account would be responsible for approval.
We have an art advisor.
Got it, okay. I was gonna say, what's an example of an art advisor? Is it like a teacher? A teacher, okay. So it'd be a teacher that would oversee the fund. I agree with that, I think the teacher's gonna best know what kind of request should be brought to administrators and what's appropriate based on the donor intent.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to accept the funds for the conditions stated.
Yeah, that's it.
And it could be distributed for the, for the, for the title.
So you want to accept the funds into a student activity account?
Yeah.
Motion by Jim Pittman, seconded by Dr. Jim. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Take a vote. Once you're ready, Kathy.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Hi. So we should probably also vote on the, because that was the money, we should vote on the supplies. So what, what would we do with the supplies if they just?
I think what we would do is reach out to our schools and see where the need is. 13 easels, you know, we would reach out to the schools and see where these are.
Okay, so if someone, so it seems the superintendent will reach out to the schools. Yes, Charlene?
I was, I was gonna make the motion.
Oh, I was gonna, they'll be able to reach out and figure out where the need is, but go right ahead and make the motion, Charlene.
I move that we accept the non-cash donation with the specification that our, our, all of our schools in the district provide input as to what their particular needs might be and that these non-cash donations be dispersed appropriately based on that. Which is kind of a lengthy worded motion, but I wanted to make sure it captured what we're trying to do.
Second.
Second. Motion by Charlene, seconded by Guy. Are there any other comments?
Did everybody notice that there's the inventory in the back of the sheet?
Yes. That's good to point out, Jim. I mean, the superintendent kind of gets much, she'll reach out to all the schools and say who needs any of these items. So I think they'll be able to find good ones. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, call the roll, it's ready.
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. We'll move on to the school calendar for 2025, 2026.
Thank you. In your packets, you have a draft calendar, 2025, 2026. We considered the, and implemented all of the successive holidays and breaks provided by the New Hampshire Education Department. We also shared this calendar with GUA, our education, our Teachers Association. And all administrators had input. You can see on this calendar that it is the usual start time for students, the day after the Labor Day weekend. We have two early releases for professional development, parent conferences, and we have March 10th off for voting. Because we, we hold voting in some of our schools. And I have this for your action, thank you.
Excellent.
One more note, I also shared this with our sending districts into LRTC. So those, those districts have reviewed this and have this, have this copied.
Are there any questions? I think it's pretty, yep.
Just quickly, is June the federal holiday?
I believe it is.
I think our school year, I missed those before. Oh. Oh, I jinxed that for the next school year, I'm sorry, guys. Oh, yeah, go right ahead, Dr. Beth, I'm sorry.
If the last day is the 17th, it looks like they're in on the 18th, is that my book?
No, the 17th is the last, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
June 17th, last half day. Well, I think we, we still have those indicated as like the calendar numbers, because they could potentially be used for makeup days for school closings.
Okay. Have it suggest maybe making that 17th red like different words. Maybe not, maybe it's fine. Nevermind.
Okay.
Subject to change.
Any other questions or comments? Discussion, we should have a motion to accept the 2025, 2026 school calendars presented. So moved by Dr. Beth?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll. And Kathy?
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Guy?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye. Thank you. So the last bit of the superintendent's report, I'll, Mary Scherr approached me a few weeks ago with the request of exploring universal school meals in our school district. And I said, that's a, it's a, definitely it's a worthy idea of consideration. This is something other states and school districts around the country have been exploring to help meet their students' needs, recognizing that food should be treated no different than like books, pencils, or the infrastructure children need to learn. Food is essential to everyone being able to sustain life, let alone concentrate in the classroom. But based on the kind of, uh, But based on the kind of extraordinary request, for lack of a better term, it would seem most appropriate to me for this board to discuss the merits of such a request and to determine if it wants to request the administration to further explore and draft a warrant article, then for the board to review and to determine at our next, our next meeting where we approve our warrant articles and finalize our warrant. So with that context, Mary, you know, Mary called me last week to kind of discuss, you know, what are possible ways to explore this, whether a warrant article is most appropriate or to just ask a team of administrators, maybe an ad hoc committee to be established to explore. But I'll let Mary speak to her request because she's the one who's provided this documentation, your meeting packets. I permitted it to be added based on the subject matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brody, Bella?
Probably when I'm speaking to your mic a little closer, Mary. I think it is on, I think it's just not close enough.
So as I was preparing my intent for tonight, which of course is something that's been on my mind for years and as I've been on the board. But as I was preparing my intent for tonight, Bella emailed me and said she had a concern about food insecurity in the school district and beyond. And what, these are some ideas that she had and what could she do? And it just felt like this wonderful golden egg dropped. And I appreciate Bella, your intention, your follow-through. She came tonight, spoke to just scary group of people. Now we're okay. And you took the initiative a lot, the first time you, thank you, I had 165. And then you arrived tonight telling us about 235 signatures. And her words tonight and her research, it just, it just blew me away. And I didn't underestimate you, but I think you did more research than I've done personally. So I appreciate that. So board members, community, and Bella and family that have come to with her tonight. I also want to reach out to our teacher, Sarah Straws, because I think it indicates this relationship, that teachers and students' sense of safety and the voice will be heard. So there's, there's that, I think, needs to be noted, especially with this, the education recognition. So we have an extraordinary opportunity to respond to the nutritional needs of all our students. Accessibility to nutritious and appetizing meals at school is fundamental. Universally accessible meals at no cost to students or their families, regardless of income, is foundational to the educational needs of all students. Opponents of school meals at no cost to students or their families will say that, say that who can afford to pay for their child's school meals? If you can afford to pay for your child's school meals, you should. And as Mr. Duchesne mentioned, but why food? When all other aspects of schooling are universal? We don't consider income for blessings, sports, technology, textbooks, lab equipment, multimedia, access to multi-disciplinary courses, gyms, weight training, safety and security, nurses, counseling, secondary education applications. Why, why food? And then the immediate next question usually comes is, how much will it cost? What is the cost for all student meals to not be reimbursed by the National School Lunch Program? That's an essential question for sure. However, I would ask that we consider, what will it yield? What is the cost benefit? So I'm gonna read off a bulleted list, and if I've left anything off, please chime in when we can discuss. This is the yield. It's known, quantifiable, and there's longitudinal data tracking that yield. And here are the cost benefits. Better academic performance, increased attendance, increased participation in meals, increased attention. And the economist that I spoke to mentioned behavioral economists. And he said the research, and we all know this, that treats snacks and meals prolong cognitive function and attention span. It would eliminate stigma and financial barriers. It improves nutritional security. It makes it much easier for parents and families. And it addresses meal debt. In 2024, and Kathy, help me if I don't say the years right, school meal debt was $15,097. 2023 was $13,900. 2021-22, this was during the COVID funds, $628, which could be explained by the à la carte purchases. Again, with COVID funds, 2020-2021, $301. The year prior to that, in the session, no COVID, $11,204. And in 2018-2019, $7,781. So from 2018, at $7,781, to the $15,000 of this current year, I think that speaks, that speaks. Reduce, it would reduce administrative paperwork and manpower determining eligibility. I looked this up, Bella, you'd be impressed. Eligibility, the eligibility manual for school meals is 114 pages long. That's, that's folks who are managing it. The application is quite simple, really, two pages, and there are four additional pages to explain that. It reminded me a little bit of taxes where it's just two pages and then there's like 50 pages to explain the two pages. So it really supports families in the approach. It empowers the lunch staff's innovation and flexibility to provide nutritious and appetizing meals. I was here for your Thanksgiving meal. I know, I still call lunch ladies, forgive me, gentlemen, I'm sure there's others. I, as an educator, the lunch ladies were as much as part of the resiliency of our students as their, as their own parents. So to honor them. It streamlines the meal service operations. It eliminates the need for school lunch third-party payment system, which is inherently discriminatory. The fee structure is inherently discriminatory if you pay once a month versus for six months. It's the same fee. Am I direct in that? No, thank you. And it's also responsive to the student focus groups, December 12th. It must be 2023. The strategic plan, their student response, which was voluminous in response to what would make you more likely to eat school food. So prior to the discussion, I will just summarize that universally accessible, nutritious, and appetizing meals at school at no cost to students or their families is an investment. I'm gonna stop there and walk on any discussion.
Is there, are there any comments? I do have a comment, but I'll let others go first. Go ahead, Beth.
Mary, so, oh, yes, that thing, sorry. Sorry. Thank you for all the work that you've done on this, I mean, 2020. So what I'm wondering is, we are reimbursed currently by the feds, right? For those who are eligible for meals. So we would be, wouldn't we be giving up that reimbursement? Okay, can you explain that to me? And also, what exactly, I mean, I'm assuming I know what you mean by school meal debt, but I'd like you to help me understand that better.
I think I'd be the best person that I can.
Or Kathy, whomever.
That's okay. I hope that's mine.
Magic launch, to use.
That's a very good question, I should shake that. Obviously, to clarify.
So school debt would be those students who have full-pay meals and don't pay. There was a law passed, I don't know, several years ago that said, we cannot deny any student any meal. The meals that are served are either, they follow the guidelines, the national guidelines for nutrition. We have choices of meals, but then there's also the meal that if students do owe money, it is a less, less amount cost overhead of a meal. It's a more inexpensive meal to produce that is offered to those students who have debt. So no student has ever refused a meal. However, obviously, if they can't pay, there is a debt. So that's where the debt is. It could also be a timeframe, and I don't want to get too technical, but there's a 30-day window in which, in the beginning of each new school year, that parents and guardians are allowed to fill out that application for free and reduced. After that 30 days is up, if they don't fill out that form, that grace period is over and they start to get, the students, if they purchase a meal, get charged full. It doesn't go retro. So if the parent decides, three months into the school year, to fill out that application and they are deemed either free or reduced, the debt that they had incurred in that timeframe does not go away. So that is the student debt.
And can one of you speak to the federal reimbursement money and how that, we're not abandoning that if we were to pursue universal meals?
I, I don't know that aspect.
I would hope as a consequence of our discussions that we empower those who have the authority to make, to better address that. All I know is it's kind of a good, better, best. I have a personal opinion, of course, but free, reduced, and even full pay subsidized to a degree. There's a history to the lunch program that goes back to the national security back in the 40s to address the needs of the families.
Do you have a question, comment, Charlene?
Well, first of all, I have been historically very supportive of this cause. And I am so grateful that you came to speak to us tonight and you made some very compelling, well, your whole presentation was very compelling. And as a district, I guess my question is, I want to see this happen in the quickest way possible. And for the last couple of years, we've been talking about having this as a budget item. And so I'm wondering if a warrant article is going to be, I hope, there's some risk with the warrant article because it might, it might not be supported by every town in the district. I would hope that it would be, but you never know. And so since we've been talking about this for a couple of years now and trying to get information about what it might cost the district, is it, is it the sense that of the board, I'm not asking for a vote, but is it, is it thought that because our current budget increase is 6.6%, that, to add to that, by actually finding the numbers it would cost for us to do this, is it more beneficial to have it be a warrant article? Because I don't really care how we do it. I just want to make sure that we do it. And the states around us have already figured out a way. And I don't, you know, New Hampshire does not need to reinvent the wheel. And so I guess I'm asking the board to sort of consider what the best approach would be to be more likely to succeed in accomplishing this.
I'll, because I'm the one who put it on the agenda as that and kind of recommended to Mary, I think this seems the most reasonable way. So I did use the liberty to kind of say, maybe a warrant article is the best. I think the reason why is this is a very different type of budget request. It's even more different than the SRO officer who hired a second one, and that itself was its own warrant article. So I think doing a warrant article and getting that consent from taxpayers, getting that buy-in from our communities, to me, seemed the most. If, if the board choose, if the board chose to ask for one to be drafted, one would be able to see the cost. And so that, there's a benefit to that. And two, I think it's a pretty extraordinary ask. We would be one of the first school districts in the state to do this. So I think with such an extraordinary ask and with such a thing, if the board really wanted to do this, I think a warrant article would be the best way to ask for the taxpayers' consent in doing so. Yes, Jim?
Oh, look, I may call it myself, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, let me just plainly state that I think it's inobrative that we should go for this and we should make this happen. I think it's embarrassing that we don't feed the kids. I mean, what's the logic? Important to note that in the last legislative session, Bill came before the legislators in Concord to fund such programs and they voted it down. Yes, they voted it down. At the same time, they tried to expand, give away money to private and religious schools. So that was more important than feeding kids. This is what happens in Congress. So once again, it comes down to our towns to take care of the children. I'm in favor of putting this more forward, and we will find a way to fund it.
Is there any other comments?
Thank you for bringing the figure tonight that you brought, the 7.8% food insecurity in Carroll County. Here in New Durham, we are part of Stratford County, right? I wonder what the food insecurity rate is here. But our district spans three counties. And how fitting it would be for a district that has such a geographically diverse base and such a high need for this particular area of assistance to be the first to adopt it. I'm very supportive of this initiative, and I hope we do find a way to fund it. I know it's a big ask, but the warrant article makes sense to me. Should put it directly to the taxpayers to make a decision.
I think they should all make the decisions. Their district and their enterprise are funding, without the taxpayers, we'd have no one. So it doesn't dawn on me any moment when we present a pledge of war. Tom?
I'm in favor. I would like to see what the costs are gonna be. It sounds like there's some type of rebate from the federal government that could be very helpful. So I'm just looking to know what the cost could be.
Yeah, I'll, so, does anyone else have any comments? Because I have two comments.
I just want to add.
Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's input because it is, it is a group think and it's important. There are other ways other than just asking for dollars. So, you know, to open it up and provide the flexibility and the innovation of brainstorming and just throwing things out there knowing it's a safe way to go about it. I looked at all the different states. I've spoken to the lady who is successful up in Maine. I think it's Vermont that just went ahead and raised taxes. I think we can, I think we can be much more effective than just going for the cash. There's some opportunities for donations. There's opportunities at the LRTC, the greenhouses. There's opportunities with grants. And I don't think I have the name, like, Brody, that farm table thing, what's it, it's coming up next? It's a grant, some kind of farm thing.
Yeah, the state has a farm to school, pilot program.
So there's opportunities. And to maximize access to federal reimbursements, we know there are families, for whatever reason, and I, I know that every single family in this school district can afford to feed their children and want to. They just can't do it with a $2,000 a month rent, having to pay for transportation to where they live because that's where they can afford where they live, to work, and then a place that's desperate for employees. I think we have a part in that that's responsive, and it's not just about dollars. Definitely retain the federal assistance national program. There's the community eligibility provision, which is a non-pricing option for schools. This is, this is all ideas that have been generated with this approval of empowering the district to come up with it. And I missed from the USDA, because what do they know? So sorry. The Child Nutrition Division, Bella, again, it did the homework. It's most effectively addressed at the local level through the efforts of concerned parents to work with our PTAs and school board to support healthy school meals. The cafeteria staff let them know through this that we value their services. This is not to disparage anything anybody's doing, to, and appreciate the good daily nutrition for their child. And also to empower our students to make sure we appreciate, that they know how much we appreciate their knowing that healthy breakfast and lunches serve their minds as well as their bodies. A little more data, during COVID, there were, again, three times as many families, I won't say take advantage, I can't come up with any other- I can't come up with any other term.
Access.
Access, thank you. Three times as many. When everybody's out in the parking lot handing out, it just gives me chills thinking about that time. Last year, the last year of free-for-all because of COVID funding meals, the last year, the number of meals was 233,330 lunch. When school resumed and it was pay-as-you-go, it was dropped down to 189,968. 43,340 fewer lunch meals. Okay, maybe lunch wasn't so good that day. I don't think so. I think there's a rich amount of data that we can... And then locally, Nights Against Hunger, Empty Fools, End 68 Hours of Hunger, Life Ministries Food Pantry. These are just outward invisible signs of a need and this community pitching in to do what they can. And this is our opportunity to support to, the kids, this is where they come. We have them all.
Are there, are there any other comments?
Don't try to cut me off, Mr. Shale.
Sorry, just trying to facilitate the conversation.
I was getting really excited though. Can we entertain a motion to support this for an article in a preliminary manner and task Mary perhaps, or anyone that the chair directs, in concert with our ed-ends folks, to craft the language for this to be approved or disapproved at the January 6th board meeting? This will give us time to have a little more detail and will be prior to the deadline for having a warrant article in place.
Jim, I'll speak to that.
Okay.
The motion that I imagine, doesn't have to be the motion, would be to request the administrative staff to draft a warrant article for universal schools. We'd request it from them, they're the professionals who would know and yield the costs. I have some comments, if it's okay. Does anyone else have any comments before? No, go ahead.
No, no, I'd like to be last.
If you want to be last, that's fine. I'd really like to see the cost. I imagine, once we see the cost, it will be a lot on the board. Not a lot, that's a bad way to phrase it, sorry, it's getting late. The board will have a task to really explain to the taxpayers what they're funding it and why it's important. I do have, I have, my only concern is our state aid for education is tied to the number of pupils we have in our buildings that apply for free or reduced price meals. My concern would be, less people filling out those forms because they no longer feel obligated to would mean lower federal reimbursements for specific meals. Because if you no longer have their income, know what it is that they've, you know, attested to, the federal government will provide different reimbursement rates. And also the amount of aid the state provides would decrease too. So the district would not just be solving a problem of, how do we pay for universal meals? We also need to solve the problem of, how do we ensure people still fill out those forms so we don't lose hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue from the federal government and state budget? So it's kind of a point that out. It's a multifaceted issue. So I'm supportive of asking the administration to explore this and to answer those questions and to give us what a cost to start the program would be. But I think we, you know, I think we, I think we go cautiously and optimistically. Cautiously optimistic, that's the best way to put it. So that's my, Dr. Beth, you have, you have an additional comment to add, so go right ahead.
Thank you, Brody. All, many valid points were raised tonight. I would just like to add that there is one group of people to whom we will not have to explain this at all, and that is the children in this district. I personally have a child in my household who would be ecstatic to be able to get breakfast at his school again, which he cannot do. I insist that he is at home presently. I would just like to note that as we proceed cautiously and optimistically, that we do so with the mind. This is a worthy battle. So thank you all for your support.
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions? Another comment?
I meant for you to go last. You want to say something after I say something?
No.
I want to say something after you say something. Anybody else?
I just wanted to point out that one of the important aspects of our strategic plan is the importance of student belonging. And when we have students who cannot afford their lunches and then are offered an alternative lunch, which is clearly not on par with what the other students are getting, that I believe is discriminatory. And I believe that that causes these students to not have as much of a feeling of belonging as we want them to have. And I just wanted to make that point, to further drive home how important universal school lunches and breakfasts are to our students. And if we are to proceed with a warrant article, I think that our SAU and our board needs to sell the heck out of it so that we can make sure that it passes. And that's the last thing I'm going to say. Do you want to say something else, Dr. Beth?
Is that, is that it?
That's it for me.
Okay. All right. So the motion will be to request the SAU staff to draft a warrant article for our January meeting to provide universal school meals to our students.
So good.
Second.
Motion by Jim Pittman, seconded by Mary. Is there any additional comments? I think we've really, I think every point has been touched upon. Every rock has been flipped. Yes, okay. Kathy, would you call the role once you're ready?
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Di?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Absolutely.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Hi. Motion passes. All right. Okay, excellent. We'll, great, carry on for the rest of the meeting. We'll move on to correspondence. I expressed, on behalf of the district, sympathy to the board staff member at LRTC. I'm also going to embarrass a board member of an accomplishment between now and our last meeting. They have no idea. Dr. Beth Scheckler won the Daniel Webster Council Golden Dough Award from Scouting America. And I had it saved on my phone, I can't get it to load with the exact description impressively says. But to say the least, apparently she's like one of the best mothers out there. Congratulations.
Chair, I think it also had quite a bit to do with leadership.
Yes, leadership, 100%. That concludes my report. We move on to the committee reports, academic affairs. Charlene, the floor is yours. There's a, Charlene, this little thing here.
Oh, wait, I've got, I've got...
If you loosen it and then look, see guys, I'm making... Yeah, look at her.
And he has superior hamstring, so yay. Okay, I believe that the board received all of the policies up for first read tonight on, what did I say, November the 18th, I think. And we will not be taking any votes. However, if anyone has anything, we have the first four policies recommended for adoption. This is first read, no votes. But did anyone have any comments at this point in time preliminarily about anything they might have questions or concerns about? Okay, hearing none. We have seven policies up for first read, recommended for reaffirmation. Did any of you have anything that struck you as something you would like to make us aware of at this preliminary moment? Okay, then we have 19 policies recommended for revision. I asked the same question. Did anyone come across anything that jumped off the page that they would like us to just have a record of prior to our next meeting where we'll be voting all of these? Okay, the last batch recommended for withdrawal for street. We have seven policies. Did anyone have any questions or concerns that they would like us to make note of for consideration when we vote at the next meeting? No, okay.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. What was your...
Under the ones that were looking for withdrawal, I would like to say that I believe why is because they are held in other places. Like there's some important policies here, but I think they're held somewhere else. So that's why they're asking us to review them.
Correct, and I appreciate that question. One thing we did decide on at our last committee meeting was that when the policies are dispersed, dispersed, that's not the word I'm looking for, when they're provided to the board for consideration, I did not double-check, but I know that we agreed as a committee that there would be a brief statement at the end of every policy up for withdrawal that explains why we're withdrawing it, if I'm not mistaken?
You're asking for a draft.
There you go, okay. So Dana, if you look at the policies for withdrawal, you got to go farther back. I think it's the orange section. Yeah, so if you look, hold on a second. So if you look at the bottom of those in blue, we've asked the SAU to include the rationale so everyone can see, everyone on the board and everyone in the public who wants to take a look at these on our website can understand why we're moving them for withdrawal. Great question. And last but not least, because I'm someone who holds on to paperwork, I noticed that at our, this goes back a ways, at our March 14th meeting, Chair Brody requested that we add a policy to take a look at again to our academic affairs schedule, and that was Policy GEA, Athletic Team Coaches. And as I was looking at the New Hampshire School Board Association sample policy that was...
Charlene, where is this on the agenda? I'm trying to, this isn't under the withdrawal, is this...
No, no, I'm requesting that at our next academic affairs committee meeting that we take a look at GEA because somehow we managed to approve it having removed some key portions from the recommended language from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And we've been, as you all know, we've been trying to very closely follow the New Hampshire School Board Association.
Yeah, so you guys, so you're the chair of the committee. If you want to contact Heather and put that on your committee agenda, go right ahead.
Okay, so I think, based on my understanding from you, I'm supposed to email you and copy Heather to ask her to put that on? Or do I email Caroline?
Charlene, Charlene, the process...
I'm just wanting clarification.
No, I understand, the process hasn't changed. They'll bring forward the policies and stuff, and anyone can go to you, because you're the chair of the committee, and ask for something to be added to your agenda. I've asked for things to be added to your agenda. You've told me before, no, and sometimes you added things.
Yeah, okay.
And you are providing input from the administration.
So I can't ask her now to add GEA. I have to...
You can ask her, you are asking her now, in fairness, but it might be easier to ask her via email.
Okay, well, I, you told me that everything had to go through you.
No, you were, you were not told everything has to go through you. Where...
Okay, so I can just email Heather?
As chair of the committee.
Yeah, well, I'm not the chair, I'm the leader technically.
Well, you're the, I mean, leader, chair, you know.
Well, yeah, but, you know, semantics.
Exactly. You can ask for things to be added. The committee, so there are three ways something can be added to your agenda. Well, really four. You can ask for it to be added. A board member can ask you for it to be added. Heather will bring forward policies that need to be updated, and she, I assume, will talk to you and send you an email before the meetings. These are the policies that need to be reviewed. And that's been how it's been since I've been on the board and probably since you've been on the board. So I'm confused what's going on right now.
I'm just clarifying, because there's been some confusion on my part, and I apologize for that. I'm just clarifying that I can, it's under my purview as leader or any other board member, I can email Heather and ask her to put a policy on our agenda.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you copied, but you're...
Okay, well, I'll copy you.
That's fine.
Caroline, would you like me to copy you as well?
It's up to the chair.
Copy her.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. So just know GEA is coming your way.
Well, I know we just passed it then, but, well, your committee will make a decision. The board will determine whether or not we amend the policy.
I'm sorry, what?
I said the committee will make that determination about whether or not to amend the policy. And, you know, the board will make the final decision, but thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's the way it works. As a committee, we're not able to make a final decision because we're not a corps.
Yes. Buildings and maintenance, Jim Pittman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Quick question, I did not see minutes of our last building maintenance. Did we not have a meeting since the last board meeting? We had a November meeting, right?
We had one in November, I think it was before the last one.
Oh, was it? Okay. All right, then whatever I said about that meeting previously, still stands. And I will just note that the next meeting of the building maintenance committee is scheduled for December 12th at 2:00, and that will be at the SAU office. And this concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. My report is, we met on November 12th, 13th, and 14th, the entire committee, and we reviewed the budget request at hearings, both the members. There were actually a few members of the public that joined, which I had never seen. Not very often people came and they asked us questions. And we had some comments about how thorough our process was, which I appreciated. We do put a lot into this that people may not realize or always see. And so based on the board's feedback tonight, we won't have another meeting scheduled in the future. So we're moving forward with our budget as it currently is, and we'll have another hearing on January 6th to start our board meeting at the Kingswood Art Center at 6:00 PM. And then, and the board will be able to make changes to the budget for once and, you know, continue moving forward with it. And we'll present what we feel is the most fiscally prudent and responsible budget that we can. With that, that includes my report. Human resources?
Mine's the easiest one, but still the rosy in the research.
You got to turn that on. Yeah, just shut.
Oh, wow, there you go. All right, whistle negotiations are ongoing. That's all I have to say, bye.
All right. That's my favorite report. Closing activities, advanced planning. I'm going to read some of the dates to everyone. Future meeting dates, we have from the December 23rd to January 1st is our December recess. I won't see many of you, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. January 6th is our final budget hearing and school board meeting at the Kingswood Art Center. 6:00 PM is when the budget hearing will start. And we have, as I mentioned earlier, there's the dates for registering to run for office and our deadlines that were in the presentation earlier. And we will now move into public inputs. Anybody want to provide public input?
Abby Benman is well-courting, again. I just wanted to, just because Mary, the food issue came up, I think it was in April at a school board meeting. So I went and I researched what we actually are doing with our free and reduced lunches. Currently, in, as of February 24, we have 57.1... Currently, in as of February 24, we have 57.14 children at Ospey Central School who are on free-to-reduce lunches. So when you consider that it's not an automatic signup, we probably have a larger number. Our Kingswood Regional Middle School is at 33.43%. Our Kingswood Regional High School is at 27.56%, but we all know that as they get older, they don't bring forms home to their parents. There are currently six bills being requested for the House session. This session, I do hope you all sign on and support. They're bringing back the automatic signup if they're on Medicaid. It didn't pass last year. They are bringing that one up. And then they're also going to push an online form to, so people will be able to sign up online. So those are two really good things. But Mary, when you talk about money and you look at money, if we have children who are able to automatically sign up, those numbers are going to jump significantly. So in your numbers, that is federal money coming from, so if you're just looking at Ospey, we're not talking about feeding 100% of the Ospey children funding it. We're talking about feeding them all, but we're really only talking probably about 35%. So your numbers and when we discuss with the public how feeding and having a universal program like this, we are feeding children. We're just going to feed them. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? I know some folks are here who might have missed the budget presentation and other things, so if you have comments or questions, you can...
Can you put the presentation online, Brody, for me?
Yes, I believe that's pretty standard, yes. It will be on, yes, and this is recorded, so, and thank you for recording it. Any other public input? Hearing none.
I have one.
Oh.
Sorry.
Hearing some.
This was more of a point of order. When you had the Governor, Webster Arts Council, I believe State RSA is anything over $10,000 needs to have a public hearing and you guys didn't have a public hearing. So I don't know if you need to open up a public hearing to accept that money because it was 9,300 cash, but with the 2,800 in supplies, it put you over that 10,000 limit. So just make sure that you don't have to have a public hearing on that to accept it.
We historically have only counted monetary, not like not in kind donations.
Okay, okay.
I shared my opinion with it publicly and I have been overruled by our legal counsel and the rest of the board, so no, we didn't leak it.
Okay, okay. Thanks.
But thank you for listening. Okay, is there any other?
I want you to...
Public input's done, so I'm going to close public input. And I'm going to seek a motion that we enter into non-public in accordance with RSA 91A for, what do we have tonight, legal and personnel? Legal and personnel. Moved by Guy Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Beth. Are there any comments or discussion?
I just want to confirm whether I just listened, but the mission of education was threatening to lower reimbursement for special education. And I was wondering, was that included in this or are we waiting to hear what's actually going to be?
I'm sorry, I was talking to the...
Kathy, Tom asked about the reimbursement rates for special education. Whether or not you accounted for that in our upcoming budget, because...
We never know from year to year, so I always estimate the maximum. I mean, granted, it's expenditures that we're going to expend this year that get calculated in are eligible for catastrophic aid, specialty aid. And then it's the budget of the state, which I don't know if it's on a binding hand right now or if there's a new budget that'll be passed, I don't know. So I, you know, I budget, I estimate the best that I can.
So Tom, they may have a supplemental budget, but that's yet to be seen.
Who's that?
The state legislature. So they might do a supplemental budget, but suffice to say Kathy's right.
My second question was, once we get the information under reimbursement, we're not even... Yet, should we have a board meeting to address that?
Well, it'd be for next year's budget, so we will have a board meeting on the budget on January 6th, so we should maybe discuss it more then, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, if that makes sense. I mean, that's what I would think we should do.
All right. I would rely upon you, sure.
I appreciate your bait. Now, the motion on the floor is enter into non-public. So I'm going to call the question. I'm going to ask Kathy to take a vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Yes.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye. And are we staying here or are we going to the library?
I just want to say thank you, New Durham.
Yes, thank you, Durham.